Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the September 18th edition of the Lebanon Plan Commission. We will begin this evening by taking the roll, please.
Okay. Diane Scott?
Here.
Dan Bayshore?
Here.
Kevin Krulik?
Here.
Corey Koots?
Here.
Brian Tandy?
Absent.
Heather Schaller?
Here.
Keith Campbell?
Here.
Rebecca Stanton?
Here.
Lori Gross?
Here.
Thank you very much. So we've got a mostly full house, both up here and in the audience. We have one item of pretty easy movement here, and it is in regards to the approval of the minutes. I believe we all have obtained a copy of the minutes, so I would entertain a motion. Move to approve by Keith. Do we have a second?
Second.
And a second with Lori. All those in favor, please signify with an "I."
"I."
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. That was the fastest part of this evening. Now on to new business. I don't see any old business before us, so we will move straight into new business. And first item we have up is docket 23-58, which is Spectra Acquisitions requesting PUD preliminary plan. Matt?
Good evening, Commission. Thanks, everybody, for coming out tonight. This one, we'll kind of give a high-level review. You guys saw this mostly at the August meeting, where you approved the rezone to PUD planned unit development. So the project's back before you tonight. This is the Paddock Place development, and if we go ahead and pull up the screen, we'll get you acclimated to where we're at and kind of walk through the project again. So we are on the north side of town. We have State Road 39 running north-south along the east here, County Road 300 along the north side. So the subject property is outlined in yellow. The Corbett Towns subdivision that was approved last month, that this commission approved, is just to the south. And then the Spring Creek subdivision that this board approved last month is just directly across the street on 300. The plan, as presented to us from Spectra, is a combination of apartment buildings and townhomes. So as we can see here in the lower portion, we have seven apartment buildings with 30 units in each, so 210 apartment units. We have the associated parking that is tucked away behind the building, so the main thoroughfare, which has been named Brandonberg Way, after the property owner that this land was purchased from was the Brandonbergs. So Brandonberg Way runs north-south through the property, so the parking is hidden behind the buildings, which adds a nice touch to keep the developments in the building straightforward while the parking and dumpster locations and things are all tucked away behind. On the north side, we have two buildings up front that are townhomes. Each building will consist of two, two-story townhomes with a single-car garage and a driveway big enough for a single car to park in, and then additional parking located across the private drive, as you can see in the rendering here. The development will also include a clubhouse, approximately 5,000 square feet. We'll have such amenities as a fitness room, gathering space, meeting rooms, some office space, and then there'll be additional public amenities throughout the development. There'll be a dog park, maybe fire pits, a gazebo, some play areas. So that's kind of the high-level version. Pretty much the same thing that you heard last month during the rezone process about the newest thing is the naming of the road running north-south. But we kind of walk through, again, this did undergo technical advisory committee review, just as all preliminary plans do. So the City of Lebanon Utilities, Stormwater, Sewer, and Electrical Divisions all submitted their comments. The Engineering Department submitted their comments for this project. The Planning Office did their review, and I'll kind of walk through some of those. But we'll touch on, excuse me, the landscaping. The preliminary plan did include, will include, a 20-foot buffer around the west, south, and eastern portions of this development where it abuts existing residential properties, so the developer is committed to a 20-foot buffer along that perimeter. Along the north side, excuse me, this file's kind of large, there will be sidewalks that run through the development, but due to the proposed improvements by the IEDC and NDOT along County Road 300, the applicant is not going to be required to put the public sidewalks along 300. They have dedicated 70 feet of right-of-way, just as the Spring Creek development did on the north side, so that the IEDC and NDOT can complete their proposed improvements along 300. So they have a 20-foot building setback that they're showing along the north side for those townhomes. So no sidewalk will be required along the north side because that'll be included in the IEDC and NDOT's project. But we will have continued sidewalk pedestrian connectivity through north-south through the project, and then connecting to the south to the Corbett Towns development. So we'll kind of quickly walk through the review process. Again, the preliminary plan just is a review to make sure that the proposal adheres to the development standards that were approved as part of the PUD rezone, and tonight we're here to tell you that they do. The development standards do, are in accordance with the PUD that was approved by this council, this commission. The architectural standards were reviewed. The apartment buildings will have 30% masonry and two additional siding styles, which vinyl siding is not permitted in this development. The townhomes will each be, again, be two-story and will include 1.75 spaces for each apartment unit. So in these large parking areas that are hidden behind these buildings, we have 1.75 parking spaces per apartment unit. I won't go through all the technical advisory comments, but those are detailed within the staff report, for the record. And then the preliminary plan review by the planning department, again, we'll just for the record indicate that we did review the street standards, the pedestrian network standards. All required easements for drainage and utility infrastructure have been identified on the preliminary plan drawings. Residential sign standards will have to be adhered to when the time comes for them to apply for a sign permit. We touched on the landscaping standards, again, the 20-foot buffer along the west, south, and east perimeters. All parking lots will meet the parking lot standard for landscaping requirements per the UDO. And then we touched on the amenities already, potentially a dog park, fire pit, outdoor grilling areas, and then the 5,000-square-foot clubhouse with the associated amenities there. So with that, in review of the submitted preliminary plan as we presented, Lebanon Planning Staff finds compliance with the unified development requirements for the subject site. Lebanon Planning Commission, or Lebanon Planning Staff recommends approval of the subject preliminary plan contingent on the following two conditions. One, that the applicant adequately addresses any remaining City of Lebanon technical advisory comments prior to the submission of construction plans and/or secondary plat. And then lastly, that the applicant receives formal drainage approval prior to issuance of permits for site construction and submission of a secondary plat. And I'm gladly happy to answer any questions for you.
Thank you, Matt. Any questions from the commission? Just one point of clarity from me. So the initial setback, then, from day one, from existing 300 is actually 90 feet, right?
Correct.
Because they have a dedicated 70 plus the 20-foot buffer.
That is correct.
Okay.
There's 90 feet from the existing roadway to the front of the townhomes.
Good deal. Thank you. Any other questions from the commission? Would the applicant care to speak?
Good evening. Thank you, Amy Vermeister. We're just here to answer any questions you might have, and thank you for your time consistently. So...
Awesome. Thank you very much. Any questions for the team? Perfect. We're good for now.
Okay. Thanks.
All right. This item is up for a public hearing, so I will officially open the public hearing for docket 23-58, which is the property located at 605 West 300 North. Feel free to step to the microphone, as we will with each of the items this evening. Please limit to three minutes, and try not to repeat too much of what has been said Public hearing is officially opened. No movement suddenly towards the microphone. We'll go ahead and close that public hearing. One item that we're going to do just slightly different this evening, we're going to go ahead and do just a standard vote rather than roll calls, because we have a number of items. Commission members, feel free, if anyone wishes to have a roll call item, please just ask for that, and we will do it. Okay? So having the public hearing opened and then closed, I would then entertain any motion on docket 23-58.
I make a motion to approve the subject preliminary plan contingent on the following conditions, addressing any additional tac comments, and to receive stormwater approval.
Okay. So we have a motion. Do we have a second?
A second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please signify with an "I."
"I."
All those opposed, same sign. That does carry. Thank you very much. Welcome to town. That will move us on to the next item, and now, keep in mind, this item will be one in, what, 16 or 17 here? They're going to be very, very similar.
The Fruimovich.
Not yet.
The Fruimovich.
Got it.
We're going to get that one knocked out.
Got it.
2378.
We're not there yet. Hold, please. So under "B" on our agenda, then, this is docket number 23-78. This is voluntary annexation request for 6.1 acres located at 3085 North, State Road 39, and that is requesting zoning classification of single-family residential. Matt, take it away.
All right. So you're going to have a few of these annexation petitions this evening, so this will be the first one on a list. But if we go ahead and pull up the screen, we'll get you acclimated to this particular property. So we, again, are on North State Road 39. Actually, the development that we just spoke of is southwest of the proposed annexed property. This is, as Mr. Koots indicated, approximately 6.11 acres located north of County Road 300, just east of State Road 39. As with all annexations, they come before this body, and this council will make a recommendation, or this commission will make a recommendation to council on zoning. So it'll be up to you to determine, based on the Lebanon Comprehensive Plan and the future land use map, what the potential zoning could be on this property or should be, should it be annexed by the council at their regularly scheduled hearings. So I will tell you that this particular area of land, north of County Road 300, in our future land use map, is contemplated as future single-family residential. So new growth should only be encouraged in areas with appropriate utilities, and all those utilities will be coming up with these new developments, developments will be taking place to the west. So the Comprehensive Plan does consider this area for future residential growth, and planning staff agrees with that. As we see development move north of town, we anticipate that 300 North corridor to see a bit more of the single-family residential growth. When an annexation petition comes to you without any specific concept plan or development plan, which this one is tonight, there's nothing planned that's been presented to staff. You know, I'm sure the property owner has ideas and wishes they want to do, but they've, no concept plan has been submitted. So when that happens, the common thing for this council to do, or for this commission to do, is to recommend the SF, or Standard Single Family Residential Zoning Classification. So before you tonight, again, given the fact that there's not a development proposed or a concept plan that's been proposed at this time, the ordinance would recommend that SF zoning classification be recommended, and the planning staff does recommend that the plant commission recommend single-family or SF zoning classification to the common council for the proposed annexed territory. And I'm happy to answer any questions, if you have any on this.
Any questions for Matt?
I do. Just so if, if we do annex it into, for a single-family, and then if it's purchased down the road, they, if it's not going to be single-family, they have to come back and do the rezoning, correct?
Correct. Yes. So any, any new development will have to come back. If, if the new development does not meet the standards of the SF or the single-family zoning classification, anything else, other than that, would have to come back to this body for a rezon, whether that is single-family, commercial. We don't anticipate industrial in this area or this particular property, but any sort of development plan that is different than SF would require rezon.
Matt, is it zoned, single-family, on all four, all, three sides at least?
Yes. So it's hard to tell, but the, the property owner that this petition is for does own this parcel to the east and northeast, and it is currently zoned SF as well. It was brought in, oh, gosh, I can't remember what year. It's been a few years since that property was annexed, but it was brought in as SF.
And once to the south, are those county or are those city?
Those are county.
Okay.
So we can kind of see, the purple line here is representing city limits, so it kind of wraps around and follows up this path up to these northern properties. So this area, this kind of triangle area, is not currently within city limits. But does have the contiguity requirement along that full northeastern boundary.
Any other questions from the commission? And does the applicant have anything they want to say in this matter? Great. So with that, again, this is a public hearing, so I will officially open the public hearing for docket 23-78, which is a voluntary annexation request for the 6.11 acres located at 3085 North, State Road 39. Please feel free to come on up to the microphone, identify yourself, and speak no more than three minutes. No sudden movements, going once, twice. We will then close the public hearing. So the public hearing is officially closed, and with that, I would entertain a motion in regards to docket 23-78. Keep in mind, commission, this is for a recommendation to the common council, would be the motion.
I'll make a motion to recommend single-family residential SF zoning classification to the common council for this proposed annexed territory.
Righty. So we have a motion for a single-family residential zoning classification. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second. All those in favor, please signify with an "I."
"I."
All those opposed, same sign. That motion does carry. We're in Monday Night Football. So with that, we will move on to letter C under our agenda, which is docket 23-62. Now, I believe Ben, as I recall it, we're going to do kind of a large overview here, go through a number of these items, and then we will break it down individually to have an individual public hearing and motion on each docket item.
Yes. Yes. So we have 16 distinct annexations. They are related to the LEAP district, and if you'll recall, when the second phase came in, there were a number of holes in that annexation where they said that there are properties they don't have under contract, those will likely be under contract in the future, and they'd be coming back for annexations when they get those properties under contract. That's what we're doing tonight, is we're starting to fill in some of the holes. There are a handful of them around the periphery of the LEAP, of what's been previously annexed, but I would say probably 80% of these are some, some hole that is somewhere within either the Phase 1 or Phase 2 LEAP district annexations. So because they aren't all contiguous to each other, we do have 16 distinct annexations, so we have to do them all separately in terms of a public hearing and motion. But what I'll do is I'll kind of give a brief overview of all of them. We'll kind of show you in the areas of all of them, and then we'll just basically identify the docket number, public hearing related to that location, and then we'll do a recommendation on each one of those. So I'll give just a quick overview here, and I think Scott has a few points he wants to go through with you as well, and then we'll move forward with each one individually. So this, again, these are phases 3 through 18. It's a total of 640 acres, separated into 16 different annexations. So I'll go through them here pretty quick. So this is up on the north side. This would be, you can see I-65 on the west side here, and the Lilly Site is in gray there, kind of on the north part of this. So annexation Phase 3 is this parcel right here, the blue parcel. I guess you can't see, see what I'm pointing to because it's not showing up up there. But it is the parcel in blue that's to the east of the gray area. And this, if you'll recall, in discussions with Eli Lilly, when we were looking at their development plan, there was discussions about there being a road that's constructed to go around the Lilly Site. And so this property was purchased in order to accommodate where that road would be located. So that is the Phase 3 annexation, and then I'll go through my recommendations when we go through each one of them individually. So the Phase 4 annexation is everything you see in the purple that's kind of on the south end of this map, and they're all contiguous to each other, so they're all taken in one annexation. So you can see each one of those parcels highlighted there, as well as, and what the red shows you is areas where the annexation area is contiguous to the existing city limits. So that shows you that does meet the contiguity requirements. So that's Phase 4. And then we'll go, oh, sorry, I should have done that, zoomed in. So there, you can see the Phase 3, and there's a Phase 4, there's 18 parcels there. Then all the remainder of the annexations are to the west of existing city limits, and this is kind of, this is in the Phase 2 area of the LEAP annexation. So you can see there's a couple of them that are on the periphery on the north end, but the rest of them are primarily filling in holes in the middle of the Phase 2 annexation. So we'll go through each one of these real quick. Phase 5 is this little triangle parcel. There are two parcels. This is, can't quite see the, I think it's two, is that 250 North?
200 North.
200 North. I can't quite read it on my screen, unfortunately. And it's along the Big Four Trail corridor. Phase 6 is the two parcels you see here. It's County Road 200 North, that's just on the north side of those parcels. Phase 6, or, excuse me, Phase 7 is this collection of five, five parcels towards the north end of Phase 2. You can see US 52 just to the northeast of this area. Phase 8 is this one parcel here that you see. It's again along US 52 at the north end of the Phase 2 annexation area. Phase 9 is this single parcel that's on State Road 32 and County, County Road 500 West that you see highlighted here. Phase 10 are these two parcels, again, along State Road 32, and that's 400 West that you see just a little bit east of that, that parcel area, so it's right off of State Road 32. Phase 11 is the two parcels you see highlighted here, and this again is off of State Road 32, and I think that's 225 West, right after the curve on State Road 32.
325.
325. Just, man, I really can't read these very well.
You're fine.
Phase 12 and 13, you see here, this is along 250 West, and Corey will correct me again if that's wrong, but it appears to be correct. And you can kind of see it's between State Road 32 and the Big Four Trail. So it's 12 and 13. Phase 14 is this parcel that you see here. This is on 400 West, just a little south of State Road 32. Phase 15 is what you see, the parcels are labeled S and T. This is on County Road 400 West, and we're just north of 50 South. And then Phase 16 is this single parcel that's on 50 South, just a little bit west of 400 West, where we just were in the last slide. Phase 17 is a single narrow parcel. This is on County Road 25 North that you see here. And lastly, Phase 18 is this single parcel that you see here. It's on 50 North, and it's just a little bit west of the curve in 32. So that was really quickly, just an overview where the parcels are located. We'll go through each one of them individually here in a second, where I'll provide what my recommendation is for the zoning, based on the Comprehensive Plan and every, and the concept plans we've seen before. But I think Scott maybe has a few things, maybe he just wanted to go through quick with you, before we go through, go through each of these individually.
Yeah. So if it pleases the commission, let's go ahead and hear from Scott, if you're okay with that, and then we'll address questions at each phase, if you're okay.
Okay. We have one back here. Bingo. Scott Alexander, outside counsel for Indiana Economic Development Corporation. Just had a couple of things to add. On the screen here, and this is just a review, this is unchanged from the, from the last version that, versions that you have seen before. This is the overall concept plan for the LEAP district. Now, of course, this includes parcels that IEDC does not control at this time, as we've discussed, but this is the concept plan. IEDC may not control some, some of these parcels, but it controls quite a bit. Today, within these areas, IEDC has 6100 acres that have been zoned as part of the planned unit development, which, so that's quite a bit. We have 600 acres that are the Lilly Site, which is the top-right area, and that has been zoned previously for general industrial use for, for Lilly. And then today, we're, we're proposing to add 460 acres for the annexation and zoning for Phases 3 through 18. With respect to the very first annexation, which was Phase 3, which was that area to the west, I'm sorry, to the east of the railroad, east of the Lilly Site, that area is not included, as you'll see on our overall concept plan. That, that was purchased to facilitate the eastern bypass. That was intentional, because we don't currently anticipate that that small parcel would be part of LEAP. It was necessary for the eastern bypass. So with respect to that, default zoning, in our mind, would be appropriate, and if IEDC sells it, which they likely will after the development of the road, then that, that end user will then come back to you with whatever zoning that they request. With respect to the other phases, Phases 4 through 18, those are all within the LEAP district, and those are kind of the puzzle pieces that are putting together. So as we indicated before, we're request that those be part of the PUD, because it's consistent, and it's, it's filling in a lot of the areas. As far as what we have left, I would say we're about 90%, maybe almost 93% there on, on the parcels that we would reasonably expect to have, and then get zoned in the PUD. So you're not done with me yet, but you're getting close with respect to that. Some of those folks, we do have some control over, but they just don't want to be annexed yet. Some of them, we have control over, but we still have to get some contiguity requirements. So this is a building block, so we have to get through this, and then we'll get some other ones. Any questions for me? That's just kind of the background.
Commission, any questions for Scott?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Very much. So now, as we said before, so Ben, any clarifying or any other points, or are we good to move forward?
Yeah. I think just one other thing that I wanted to put up on the screen for you. This is the Comprehensive Plan Future Land Use Map that we just, we just did just in the last couple of months. You can see the area in the dark purple is the, is the area identified for the LEAP Innovation District, and Scott had mentioned that Phase 3 parcel is just, just east of that line, right up, right up in here, and is shown in an ag area. So right here, here in a second, when I start going through these individually, that's actually the Phase 3, the first one we'll talk about. actually the Phase Three, the first one we'll talk about. But just wanted to highlight again, and just confirm what Scott said, that that parcel is just outside of the LEAP district area shown on our, our comprehensive plan, and all of the rest of the parcels that we're, we'll go through are within the dark purple is LEAP, supporting the recommendation we provided on the zoning. Just wanted to do that real quick. And I think we'll just, we'll just start working our way through each one of these annexations. So I'll go back to Phase Three, which is this fourteen point one nine acre parcel. As I mentioned, this one is outside of the LEAP Innovation District area, so we have recommended, because it's, because there's no concept plan providing for development for this parcel, that we have recommended default zoning, which is the SF zoning district for this parcel. So that's the recommendation for you tonight. So any questions about this parcel specifically?
Yeah, so just to, to kind of clarify for everybody watching at home, and then of course here in the room. So what we heard earlier was that kind of hundred thousand foot view, we went through those pictures very, very quickly. You might be head spinning a little bit at home, it's fine, we're going to slow ourselves down now and go parcel by parcel. So just so everybody kind of has a level field of where we're at. And then we are on to the Phase Three, which in this case is the, the first phase that we're hearing this evening. So in regards to the Phase Three, are there any questions for Ben from the commission?
Perfect. So I will then move to the public hearing portion. So we will officially open the public hearing for docket twenty-three dash sixty-two. This is a voluntary annexation of fourteen point one nine acres, listed as a very long parcel number that was on the screen just a moment ago. If you have any questions or wish to make any comments, please feel free to step to the microphone, identify yourself. I'm going to skip this step and a couple of these other ones, but please limit yourself to three minutes, and try as much as possible to not repeat other members. So feel free to come on up for the public hearing. As regards to this specific docket, seeing no sudden movements, we will officially close the public hearing. And I think we're going to be pretty simple on that one. If there's no additional questions from the commission, we'll move on to motions in regard to docket twenty-three dash sixty-two. And again, here, just like the previous item, we are looking for a recommendation to the common council.
I'll make a recommendation to the common council for this SF zoning classification for the proposed annex territory.
Perfect. We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
We've got a motion and a second. All those in favor, please signify with an eye.
Eye.
All those opposed, same sign. That motion does carry. So Phase Three is official, moving on to Phase Four. So if we want to pull that picture up one more time here real quick.
All right, so now we're moving into the area that, on the comprehensive plan, that's identified as the LEAP Innovation District, and if you'll recall, we, we had initiated and implemented a LEAP PUD ordinance to govern the LEAP district area, and that was adopted by the common council. So in these cases, we would be looking to recommend the LEAP PUD zoning district for any of these annex territories. So here is Phase Four that you see here, it's a collection of eighteen parcels, that's about a hundred and fifty-seven acres, you got a couple of larger parcels, and then there's some filling in of, of some of the residential properties they have in a contract now. So again, you see where it's contiguous to existing city limits, shown in red. So again, the, the recommendation would be for the LEAP PUD zoning district for this annex territory. Any questions on this one?
Questions for Ben on Phase Four. All right, so again, we will open the public hearing on docket twenty-three dash sixty-three, is a voluntary annexation of a hundred and fifty-seven acres. That was the acreage that we saw up on the screen just a moment ago. The public hearing is officially open, follow all the same rules that I don't have to say Feel free to step to the microphone. Seeing none, we will close the public hearing. So the public hearing is officially closed on twenty-three dash sixty-three, and I would entertain a motion from the commission.
I'll make a motion to recommend the LEAP Lebanon PUD district zoning classification for the proposed annex, annexation territory to the common council.
We've got a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Got a second. All those in favor, please signify with an eye.
Eye.
All those opposed, same sign. That does carry. Moving on, for those following along on the agenda, we're under letter E, this is docket number twenty-three dash sixty-four, this is three point nine six acres.
And you will see this one identified here, it's this little triangle piece that you see, there are two parcels there, and the Big Four Trail is just on the north side. And Corey, remind me what that north-south road is there that I can't read?
Uh, so north-south road is three fifty west.
Three fifty west, okay, so we got three fifty west and the Big Four Trail. Again, there are two parcels here, this is in the middle of the LEAP district, so again, we are recommending the LEAP PUD zoning district for these two parcels.
And if we could actually leave the map up, unless we have a member of the public come and talk, I think that'll be more beneficial to the folks at home that are attempting to review, if the commission's okay with that. So we are looking at Phase Five. So any questions from Ben on page five, or Phase Five? With that, I will open the public hearing. This is officially opening the public hearing for docket twenty-three dash sixty-four, which is three point nine six acres of land. Feel free to step up to the microphone, make any comments. Seeing no sudden movements, everyone is still awake in the crowd, I can confirm that. So we will officially close the public hearing. So I would then entertain a motion for docket twenty-three dash sixty-four.
I'll make a motion to recommend the LEAP Lebanon PUD district zoning classification for the proposed annex territory to the common council.
So we do have a motion, do we have a second? We've got a second. All those in favor, please signify with an eye.
Eye.
All those opposed, same sign. That one does carry. Moving on to Phase Six, which is on your screens at home and on the big screens here in the office, docket twenty-three dash sixty-five, this is a seventy-three acre plus parcel of land. Like we're located along County Road two hundred north.
All right, as Mr. Koots mentioned, this is about seventy-three point four one acres, it's these two parcels that are highlighted here, identified with the number six. For Phase Six, you can see it's contiguous on three of, almost four of its borders here, so it does meet the contiguous requirements. And again, this is in an area within the LEAP district concept plans, and we do recommend, again, the LEAP PUD zoning district for these parcels, again, it's about seventy-three acres.
Thank you, Ben. So I will officially open the public hearing on docket twenty-three dash sixty-five, voluntary annexation of seventy-three point four one acres, located along County Road two hundred north. Feel free to step to the microphone. Seeing none, we will officially close the public hearing on docket twenty-three dash sixty-five, and I would entertain a motion from the commission.
I will motion to recommend the LEAP Lebanon PUD district zoning classification for the proposed annexation territory to the common council.
We've got a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Got a motion and a second. All those in favor, please signify with an eye.
Eye.
All those opposed, same sign. That does carry. Moving along to Phase Seven annexation, so Ben, I'm going to steal some of your thunder, see if we can't streamline a little bit. So this is docket number twenty-three dash sixty-six, this is a hundred and eighty acre parcels located approximately off of State Road fifty-two and a couple of county roads that I can't read because they're covered in other colors. Two, two fifty north and west, both. Perfect.
Again, as Mr. Koots mentioned, a hundred and eighty acres, and this again is in the LEAP district concept plan and part of our comprehensive plan in the LEAP Innovation District, so we do recommend the LEAP PUD zoning district for this annex territory as well.
I will officially open the public hearing for docket twenty-three dash sixty-six, voluntary annexation of a hundred and eighty acres. Feel free to step to the microphone. Seeing no one stepped to the microphone, we'll officially close the public hearing on docket twenty-three dash sixty-six, and I would entertain a motion.
I make a motion to recommend the LEAP Lebanon PUD district zoning classification for the proposed annexation territory to the common council.
We do have a motion, do we have a second?
I'll second.
We've got a second. All those in favor, please signify with an eye.
Eye.
All those opposed, same sign. That motion does carry. Phase Eight of the annexation, docket twenty-three dash sixty-seven, this is seventy-nine and a half acres, located off of three fifty west and State Road fifty-two.
Again, similar to all the, the previous ones, this is in the LEAP district, supported by a comprehensive plan, is a LEAP Innovation District, so we do recommend the LEAP PUD zoning district for this annex territory of a little over seventy-nine acres that you see here on the screen.
Ben, does this one have continuity with it?
It, yeah, the contiguous is shown here in red, so it's on the, along the western side, and it's, it's a one-eighth contiguous, so you multiply that, where the, the length of the contiguous area times eight, and it, it does easily meet the contiguous requirements.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm. So with that, we will open the public hearing on docket twenty-three dash sixty-seven, voluntary annexation of seventy-nine point five four acres. Please feel free to step to the microphone. Seeing no interest in the microphone, I will close the public hearing officially on docket twenty-three dash sixty-seven and entertain a motion. My neck's a little sore looking to the left here, guys, I'm just saying, I'm just throwing it out there.
I make a recommendation of the LEAP Lebanon PUD district zoning classification for the proposed annexation territory to the common council.
We have a motion, do we have a second? We've got a second. All those in favor, please signify with an eye.
Eye.
All those opposed, same sign. That motion does carry. Phase Nine, docket number twenty-three dash six-eight, three point three one acres, located off of State Road thirty-two, just east of County Road five hundred west.
All right, this is a little bit over three acre parcel, you see highlighted here with the letter K, it is contiguous on its southern border here, along State Road thirty-two. And again, this is in the LEAP Innovation District with the comprehensive plan, and so we would recommend the LEAP PUD zoning district for this annex territory.
Well, officially open the public hearing on docket twenty-three dash sixty-eight, voluntary annexation of three point three one acres. Please feel free to step to the microphone. No movement towards the microphone, we will close the public hearing officially on docket twenty-three dash sixty-eight, and I would entertain a motion.
I'll motion to recommend the LEAP Lebanon PUD district zoning classification for the proposed annexation territory to the common council.
We've got a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Got a second. All those in favor, please signify with an eye.
Eye.
All those opposed, same sign. That motion does carry. Docket twenty-three dash six-nine, this is one point nine one acres. This is one of those items closing in a little bit of a hole here in the map. This is located on State Road thirty-two and just west of County four hundred west.
All right, I'm going to sound like a broken record here, but this again is a property a little under two acres, it is within the LEAP Innovation District area, the comprehensive plan, and supports a recommendation of a LEAP PUD zoning district classification for the annex territory.
So with that, I will open the public hearing on docket twenty-three dash six-nine, and that is on a voluntary annexation of one point nine one acres. Any parties interested in speaking, please step to the microphone. Dramatic pause just long enough, and we will close the public hearing. So the public hearing is officially closed, and I would entertain a motion on docket twenty-three dash six-nine.
I move the, for a favorable approval for docket twenty-three sixty-nine for the PUD zoning district classification.
We have the motion for the PUD recommendation to the common council, do we have a second?
I'll second.
We've got a second. All those in favor, please signify with an eye.
Eye.
All those opposed, same sign. That motion does carry. Moving right along, this is Phase Eleven, docket number twenty-three dash seven zero, voluntary annexation of seventy-nine point six five acres, located on State Road thirty-two and County Road three twenty-five west.
All right, for this, just short of eighty acre parcel, or two parcels, I guess totaling about eighty acres, again, within the LEAP Innovation District classification on our future land use map for the comprehensive plan, so we do recommend the LEAP PUD zoning district for this annex territory.
And I will go ahead and again, open the public hearing on docket twenty-three dash seven zero, voluntary annexation of seventy-nine point six five acres. Interested parties, please step to the microphone. Seeing none, we will close the public hearing officially on docket twenty-three dash seven zero, and I would entertain a motion.
A motion, we recommend the LEAP Lebanon PUD district zoning classification for the proposed annexation territory to the common council.
We've got a motion, do we have a second? We have a second. All those in favor, please signify with an eye.
Eye.
All those opposed, same sign. That motion does carry. Phase Twelve, we're going to stay on this same picture for Phase Twelve and Thirteen. Phase Twelve is twenty-three dash seventy-one, and it is two acres of land located off of two fifty west.
Yes, this two acres of property, just south of the Big Four Trail, it is located within the LEAP Innovation District area on the comprehensive plan, so again, we recommend the LEAP PUD zoning district for this annex territory.
Perfect. And for those watching at home, I can confirm, Ben is saying that live and in person, it is not a recording, he's just getting that good. I will officially open the public hearing on docket twenty-three dash seventy-one, so public hearing is open, p- please feel free to step to the microphone. With that, we will close the public hearing officially, so I would entertain a motion on docket twenty-three dash seventy-one, voluntary annexation of two acres of land.
I'll motion to recommend the LEAP Lebanon PUD district zoning classification for the proposed annexation territory to the common council.
We've got a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Got a second. All those in favor, please signify with an eye.
Eye.
All those opposed, same sign. That motion does carry. Docket twenty-three dash seventy-two is the voluntary annexation of four point six six acres of land, you see that as the number thirteen on your screen here, this is located on County Road two fifty west, just north of State Road thirty-two and south of the Big Four Trail.
All right, as Mr. Koots mentioned, we've got about four and a half acres here, highlighted with the number thirteen on the screen, it is contiguous on three sides of the property to existing annex territory. This is within the LEAP Innovation District area in the comprehensive plan, so we do recommend the LEAP PUD zoning district for this annex territory.
We will officially open the public hearing on docket twenty-three dash seventy-two, please feel free to step to the microphone. Seeing none, we will close the public hearing of docket twenty-three dash seventy-two, and I would entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to recommend the LEAP Lebanon PUD district zoning classification for the proposed annexation territory to the common council.
Thank you very much, Lori, we do have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second as well, all those in favor, please signify with an eye.
Eye.
All those opposed, same sign. That motion does carry. Moving on to docket twenty-three dash seventy-three, this is the voluntary annexation of twenty-six point eight acres of land located off of County Road four hundred west, just south of State Road thirty-two.
All right, this is a twenty-six point eight acre parcel, shown here All right, this is a 26.8 acre parcel, shown here highlighted with the number 14 and contiguous on all four sides of existing city limits. It is again, within the LEAP Lebanon Innovation District area on the comprehensive plan, so we do recommend the LEAP PUD zoning district for this annex territory.
Thank you, Ben. I will officially open the public hearing for docket 23-73, the voluntary annexation of 26.8 acres. Please feel free to step to the microphone if you wish to make comment. Seeing none, we will close the public hearing and I would entertain a motion in regards to docket 23-73.
I make a motion to recommend the LEAP Lebanon PUD District zoning classification for the proposed annexation territory to the common council.
We do have a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
We've got a second as well. All those in favor, please signify with an eye.
Eye.
All those opposed, same sign. That motion does carry. Docket 23-74 is the voluntary annexation of 8.7 acres located in the LEAP District. Looks like we're located along that same County Road 400 West.
All right, the Phase Fifteen is what's identified, parcels S and T on the screen here, one on either side of County Road 400 West, contiguous to each other and contiguous on both the west and eastern borders to existing city limits. Again, in our comprehensive plan suggests this is within the LEAP Lebanon Innovation District area, so we do recommend the LEAP PUD zoning district for the annex territory.
Thank you, Ben. I will officially open the public hearing on docket 23-74. If you wish to make comment, please feel free to step to the microphone. Seeing none, we'll officially close the public hearing on docket 23-74, and I would entertain a motion from the commission.
I'll make a motion to recommend the LEAP Lebanon PUD District zoning classification for the proposed annexation territory to the common council.
We do have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Got a second as well. All those in favor, please signify with an eye.
Eye.
All those opposed, same sign. That motion does carry. Docket 23-75 is a voluntary annexation of 3.38 acres located on the same picture we were just looking at. This is just west of County Road 400 West, along County Road 50 South.
Thank you, Mr. Koots. This is a 3.38 acre parcel on County Road 50 South. Again, this is within the LEAP Innovation District area on the comprehensive plan, and we do recommend the LEAP PUD zoning district for the annex territory.
Thank you very much, Ben. So docket 23-75, I will officially open the public hearing. Please feel free to step towards the microphone if you wish to make any comments. Seeing none, I will close the public hearing. So with that, I would entertain a motion on docket 23-75, the voluntary annexation of 3.38 acres.
Motion, we recommend the LEAP Lebanon PUD District zoning classification for the proposed annexation territory to the common council.
We do have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We've got a second as well. All those in favor, please signify with an eye.
Eye.
All those opposed, same sign. That motion does carry. Pause for effect. We only have two left. We're at docket 23-76. This is the voluntary annexation of 1.41 acres. Notice on your screen here, we're along County Road 25 North.
All right, this is a, I highlighted with the number 17 on the screen here. It's a 1.41 acre parcel. Again, it's within the LEAP Innovation District area on the comprehensive plan. It is contiguous on all four sides. It looks like a solid red line, but there is a narrow parcel in there somewhere. Being that it's in the LEAP Innovation District area on the comprehensive plan, we do recommend the LEAP PUD zoning district for this annex territory.
Thank you very much, Ben. So with that, I will open the public hearing on docket 23-76. Please again, feel free to step towards the microphone if you wish to make comment. Seeing none, we will close the public hearing on docket 23-76, and I would entertain a motion from the commission.
I'll make a motion to recommend the LEAP Lebanon PUD District zoning classification for the proposed annexation territory to the common council.
We do have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Got a motion and a second. All those in favor, please signify with an eye.
Eye.
All those opposed, same sign. That motion does carry. And with that, we are on the last docket item of the evening. This is under letter R, as in Roger. Docket 23-77, this is the voluntary annexation of .83 acres. This appears to be located just south of Indiana State Road 32, off of County Road 300 West.
All right, as Mr. Koots mentioned, we've got a 0.83 acre parcel highlighted here with number 18 on your screen. This again, is within the LEAP Innovation District area on the comprehensive plan. So we do recommend the LEAP PUD zoning district for this annex territory.
Thank you very much, Ben. So with that, we will open the public hearing again. Feel free to step towards the microphone if you wish to make comment. Seeing none, we will close the public hearing for the evening. So the public hearing on docket 23-77 is officially closed, and I would entertain a motion from the commission.
I move for a favorable recommendation for docket 23-77 for the LEAP Lebanon PUD District zoning classification for the proposed annexation territory to the common council.
Perfect. We've got a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Got a motion and a second. All those in favor, please signify with an eye.
Eye.
All those opposed, same sign. That motion does carry.
Maybe just a couple of final comments on all the annexations that were on the agenda tonight. This is step one in a multi-step process. Just the recommendation for the zoning is the responsibility of the plan commission. Next, this will be forwarded to the common council for their consideration of an annexation ordinance. That will be next Monday evening. The first readings and public hearings on those ordinances will be next Monday evening. And then there will be a second reading and potential adoption of those ordinances that would take place on October 9th.
Is that Columbus Day?
That's Columbus Day, so it's October 10th.
Got it. So again, for those keeping track, this was step one of a multi-step process. The next two council meetings will address from here. Any other questions or comments for Ben from the commission? Any other business to come before the commission? With that, I would entertain the favorite motion of the evening, which is to adjourn. Got a motion to adjourn? Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. All those in favor, please signify with an eye.
Eye.
All those opposed, same sign. We are now adjourned. Thank you very much.